Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 18, 2017 Meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Allman, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton, here. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dishoe?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahauer?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. First on our agenda tonight is an update on the Capital Project and Options with Mr. Perkins and our representative from Crabtree.
Hello. All right, go ahead. We have just a brief slide deck to update everybody on a couple of things that have occurred since our last meeting. First up, one of the things that was raised last meeting was if we move forward or when we move forward with option, how are we going to communicate that to the public? So some of the examples of how we're going to convey it is obviously through our monthly board updates. We're going to develop your traditional flyers and brochures that we can hand out, but we'll also develop a traveling Q&amp;A roadshow where we'll go on the road. One of the things that we developed at other companies that I've worked with is a potential video where you get one or two people to give the why are we doing it and here's why we're doing it, and then you get other key stakeholders throughout the community to give other testimonies as to different aspects of the project. It's very nice because it does give you that consistent message, and if you can't have, say, one of the board members present, maybe they're in the video, they can still hear their opinion and everything. So it works out really well. In addition, for our website, we're going to have a whole section that we're going to develop out. We have a draft design, and for those that haven't been on the website, we do have all the meeting minutes and different presentations that have been given over the last couple of years. If you go up to the Capital Projects part of the webpage and then click on that, and then you just go down to whatever facilities or, I should say, fiscal year planning section that you need, expand that out, and you'll see all the meeting minutes there. Once we develop these different tools, go ahead, we'll start attending different community events, setting up informational events. We'll set up areas at designated times for Q&amp;A throughout the community. Perhaps we do, say, Monday night from 6:00 to 8:00, we're going to be at the library, come out and answer any questions that you might have during with the project. Participating in back-to-school nights and open houses throughout the school district. We'll invite different, very specific groups. Let's say we're talking about athletic spaces, or maybe we invite Dover Youth Basketball and some of our other community sporting groups out. Maybe we're talking about performing arts areas, so we'd want to invite Orange Mine and some of our other performing arts groups within the community. Definitely presenting at PTO meetings, definitely doing an information session on the first day of school for staff, and then your traditional methods such as mass mailings and media. This slide we shared with you last month, Jen shared it, it's just the different meetings that we've had to date from April. We've had two core group meetings since our last board meeting, programming committee meeting, and a steering committee meeting. As far as why has moved forward, Tracy has a couple of points she'd like to bring up.
Just as we've been, we just had our meeting, our steering committee meeting, last week, and it was a great, we had a great conversation with parents and community members and some students. But just a couple of things to remember, that the current high school doesn't provide and support the kids that 21st Century Learning does. One of the things that was discussed at that meeting by a parent was how colleges are set up now with collaborative spaces and collaboration and meeting together and hybrid classes, and right now the high school's just not designed that way. It's important to remember that this plan affects the entire high, or the entire school district. We would like to bring sixth grade up to the intermediate school for, as a middle school, so that would allow us to do some other rethinking of the elementary schools and how that they are organized. Just a reminder again, if we wait any longer, that the construction and financing costs will continue to rise, and this time next year, you have no idea how much more that they'll go up. There is a planned con moratorium that's in effect, and no new applications will be accepted, so should we not move soon with where we have been approved, we could possibly lose that. And again, a reminder tonight, this is not a commitment to build, it's a commitment to move forward with the next phase, so the design process can begin and we can begin a huge community outreach push, so the community knows exactly what the project is, what it's going to cost everyone. And as Brad said in that, in the previous couple slides, we will be on the road, all of us, all the administrators, we've all committed to doing this, and we will be everywhere. So everyone gets the facts, and everyone has all the information, so you can hear from people when you need to make that decision.
Lastly, last week, we sent out a community survey. Out of the 468 responses we got, which is pretty typical with looking back through trends of different surveys that we've given, student and staff safety came out first, followed by the ability to support educational programs, then costs. Numbers four, five, and six kind of all fell within the same range, maybe one or two-point differences, and then incorporation of community spaces and other. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to John.
Good, thank you. So our highlights will include just a real brief overview of some of the information that we have already presented. So here is a summary of each of the options depicting their description and their relative As mentioned with regard to the current plan con moratorium, one of the highlights that we've, or piece of new information that we've added, is the estimated PDE reimbursement. Option two currently is the only approved plan con Part A, which is the new high school on the intermediate site, for which you were, the board's action in May of last year put you in the queue for that. With the current moratorium, option three would also require a variance, which is a process to go through to determine whether or not you would be eligible, but at this point in time, we held that as zero, so we added the estimated reimbursement to factor in to each of the projects and options. So more specifically, with regard to the high school, the moratorium expired on the first and is back in action, if you will, through Senate Bill 227. There will be no new plan con Part As accepted by the state for any project for any district. So in kind of a summary fashion, what we reviewed with the Department of Ed, option one would require a new Part A, which then therefore would make that particular project not eligible for reimbursement, which was why we had shown it as zero. In addition to that, there's, you'd have to consider the loss of the remaining reimbursement that the district is currently receiving at the high school, and we use 2020 with an assumption that would be about the time, if the district considered that option, where you would switch over buildings. So the Department of Ed has estimated that to be about $2.5 million. Option two is the scenario I spoke of earlier. That's the current project that you, the board had previously taken action, remains eligible, and the reimbursement is estimated at $4 million. Option three would remain eligible, as I said, however, a variance is required because of the plan con work previously done on the building and that you are still receiving reimbursement. So that is questionable, and that's dependent upon the Department of Education. We put that as zero at this point, given where you are in the numbers of years. The Department of Ed has not issued many variances to districts in that consideration. And option four, again, that's a scenario that is substantially different than what was submitted and approved, and technically that would require a new Part A, therefore that project, as described as option four, would not be eligible for reimbursement. So here again were the categories that the board used to establish the ranking, and again, starting first and foremost with educational program, costs, student safety, site adaptability, building organization with regard to program and 21st Century Learning, collaborative learning, and then phasing disruptions to both students and staff. And our ranking from highest to lowest obviously is four to one. And on the next chart is the summary of each of those categories now shown on the left to compare as a side-by-side comparison. So option two, at 10,000 feet, if you will, addresses the majority of each of those categories as defined by the board. So that ends our highlights and overview of both, if there are any questions.
No question regarding plan con reimbursement. The $4 million that was listed there as plan con reimbursement under option two, is that typically paid out in yearly increments? You had mentioned about Plan A being about $2.5 million that I'm assuming is yet to be paid on a previous construction project, so led me to believe that this is something that goes on incrementally, it's not like an all-at-once reimbursement, is that correct?
You are correct. The only all-at-once scenario would be if the district were to pay cash for the project. So yes, the reimbursement comes back to you over the life of the loan, so if there's a 20-year financing, they will structure their reimbursement over that same payback, which is why you have that scenario on the payback of the existing high school. So you're correct. Okay, thank you.
I have two quick questions.
Sure.
I'm going to ask you to predict the future.
I'll do my best.
Yeah. So my first question is looking, if we were to do a new high school and then converting the intermediate school to the high school, which again, to me, looks like the best and most cost-effective option. If we were to convert the high school to an intermediate school, obviously, we'd have to have that last us for 20 more additional years educationally. Seeing what you're seeing in the educational realm, would that be a good building 20 years from now from an educational standpoint?
Good question. So the district has invested some money with the improvements over the years, but I think from a programmatic standpoint, the advantage that that particular conversion has is square footage. You would be putting fewer students in a building with larger square footage. So you would have, for instance, where the ag department area is, we would have the ability to potentially redesign that for something like a makerspace, some programmatic things that would be more attractive to middle school students and prepare them for the transition to the high school and then onto college. So probably the first and foremost would be the ability to convert space that you already have without having to build new construction.
And then the second question is concerning the price. Knowing what you know about what we would like to see in the buildings at this stage of the game, how confident are you in the numbers that you have presented this evening?
Very, and we use a lot of our own bid data, so we don't refer to an industry standard textbook that's written nationally. We use projects like Middletown High School that was geographically bid in this close proximity, close timeframe, similar square footage to compare. It's difficult to anticipate when there will be increases in the market, but we have factored that in the budget. There are cost escalation factors built into this budget, and there are other contingencies built into the budget. I would also say our prior experience working with the district, we have a pretty good understanding from the facility side, what you're looking for for the infrastructure, from the technology. So I would say that we didn't guess it much at all based on our prior knowledge and the knowledge of the study. So from the program side, we had seven or eight programming meetings and were able to obtain a lot of input, so I think we truly do understand your program, what makes it unique, and it's typical to what we're seeing within our experience of having designed so many other high schools. So we're comfortable with the cost. And what I would say is, one of the things that you've hired us to do is to manage that. So part of the board monthly updates will be to bring back to the board, there'll be things that we discover along the way, there will be things, there's a better way to do something, or a program piece that becomes important. That is a decision that would come back to the board for your direction, and that's our responsibility to manage that budget and work to that budget. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question, and Mr. Delauter raised that question about the current high school, which would be renovated. That $5 million that's estimated for the renovation purposes there, does that jeopardize the previous plan con money that is still being paid to us from the previous renovation if we were to do that? And then secondly, does that reset the clock? If we do a minor renovation to that building, does now, does it become 20 more years down the road before we could touch that building again, if we ever had to?
Well, the main difference between option one and the conversion is you're basically, you know, that was building a new high school on the existing high school site and demolishing it. Because you're repurposing the building, the answer is no, that reimbursement should stay in play. Those are all issues too that we would want to weigh closely, because if, when you're pursuing a $5 million project, which that project is technically not reimbursable, there was not a plan con application submitted for the intermediate school, I think for a number of reasons. Given the size of that building and the dollar value, you wouldn't want to, when you have the potential to capture all of your reimbursement, do a very small project, and $5 million is a very small project. Does that make sense? So you may elect to, it's a good idea to probably not pursue reimbursement for that, which now the moratorium is back in play, and I'm going in circles a little bit, but there's probably a larger project down the road that if plan con gets resolved, or it gets converted to R-Con or some other scenario that they've suggested, that would be the district's best opportunity to do a comprehensive project to that building at that time, which would then set the clock and maximize your reimbursement. A $5 million project would not capitalize on all the potential reimbursement that you could get a few years down the road.
So what you're basically saying is it's only triggering a response from PDE if we try to apply for some sort of reimbursement, not just the fact that we're doing something there, and a minor renovation wouldn't send, set off alarms that now we no longer get our previous reimbursement if we're not trying to get reimbursed for that minor renovation, is what you're saying, correct?
Sure, and you know, when we reviewed that with the Department of Ed, I think their plan examiner is very good at understanding the potential scenarios, and he was pretty clear on, and again, the key distinction between why option one would be such a significant loss in reimbursement is because it's constructing a new school where the new high school, or the current high school sits and is currently receiving reimbursement. But to repurpose it as an intermediate, not pursue the reimbursement, does not trigger that. Okay, thank you.
I wondered, how, how many square feet per student do you have to put into a building?
It depends on your educational program. There are guidelines, and every program is a little different. We've designed high schools for 600 students that will have three gyms, so that square foot per student can go up pretty high. I can't tell you the exact number that your program is yielding, but it is pretty much right in the middle of the numbers of students. It's on the lower side because it's, we're trying to be efficient with the square footage. If you remember in the budget, we were trying to stay as close to 275,000 square feet as possible for that number of students. So the real answer is, it depends on everyone's program. We could share a document later perhaps on other districts to show you how that can vary depending upon their educational program.
Okay, and when I toured Middletown, I learned that the storage space is not reimbursable, okay? Because there was a room there that they had been, you had been very clever with designing, that there was like a balcony, that they could store things up.
Oh, in one of the tech, I think tech ed areas?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so my next question is, I understand that auditoriums are not reimbursable also, is that correct? And can you do anything to somehow change the name, or, you know, I don't know? Is there anything creative with that?
Well, I think probably to more accurately describe, they are reimbursable, it's scheduled area, because that's considered educational space. However, the way the Department of Ed looks at their formulas and calculations, yes, they really drive in on the actual numbers of classrooms and their sizes, but all of those spaces are, you know, you have to consider the project as a whole. Auditorium is part of the reimbursable project, they do not exclude those things. What we try to do as architects is be very efficient with those types of spaces like storage rooms, the support spaces, corridors, and things like that, to make those very efficient, so there's more square footage in the classrooms, auditoriums, or gymnasiums, and so forth. So the project as a whole, the auditorium is considered part of the project and is reimbursable.
Okay, and then I know that, I talked to Mr. Walker about the geothermal that was used with this building, and he was very optimistic about how much it has saved and will continue to save. So are we thinking that at all over there? Because I hear there's like tons of rock over there, do you know?
We heard the same, and we know that specifically, I think where the modulars were put, Mr. Nelson made us very aware of some of the actual rock outcroppings and so forth. The amount of rock actually, believe it or not, for geothermal system can actually be conducive to drilling, because they're able to maintain, some of those well depths can get up to 400 feet, and if it's unstable soil, they have to install well casing to maintain that opening for the loop piping to be installed. So we would conduct, part of, part of the next step is to discuss potential tests that would determine if there was a BTU capacity or the ability to provide enough cooling and heating for that size of a building. So we would go through a series of tests, we will also go through geotechnical engineering for foundation design. So we will, we will be bringing back to the board recommendations for some exploratory work, have our engineers give and provide a recommendation on three systems and which is the best long-term fit, which may have an upfront capital cost. Geothermal would have an increased cost for wellfield construction, but you have the potential of lower operating costs, and show you what that lifecycle cost analysis is. But we would have to conduct some further tests to, which is part of the next, of the next phase, to tell you if it is an ideal candidate or not. We have done geothermal tests where we have come back to our clients and say that the drilling results, the BTU transfer and the installation is going to be much more costly and would not recommend it. And we've also installed a fair number as well, but it is very, very, very site-specific.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Could you stay until we talk about this later on the agenda then?
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of tonight's agenda. It is a three-minute period, so if you have anything you would like to discuss that is on the agenda or off, please come to the microphones, the seats, and state your name and address for the record.
I feel kind of funny talking about this when you're talking about, you know, $70,000 or $70 million budgets to me, this is a lot of money. My name is Barbara Greer, I'm a 2009 Wyatt Circle. I purchased the property last year, in fact, today's been one year since my settlement date. It was a foreclosure. I paid extra to make sure all the tax liens were straightened out, and I was told at settlement that the next time I paid, needed to pay taxes, they would be mailed to me. Well, I never got taxes, didn't realize I was supposed to be getting taxes until March, and I got an overdue notice with interest charge to me. And I called, I went to the county, the county said it was your, the township saw a problem that they mailed it apparently to the previous owners at my address, but the post office was being very efficient and probably put the change of address label on and sent it to them, and having been a foreclosure, they weren't going to do me any favors, and they threw it in the trash can. That's what we presumed happened. Locally, I was told that it was the county's fault, and then I was told, well, you never buy a house in the spring or the fall because it takes them a while to change addresses. In any event, I'm out of $250. I'm a senior on a very low fixed income, and I called the town or the office, and I was told that you were the only person that I needed to talk to. Well, they said send a letter, but I don't trust sending letters. So here I am, is there anything I can please do to get some of my money back?
Mrs. Kroom, could you maybe work with her and Mrs. Benko? Mrs. Benko is our business manager, so maybe between Mrs. Benko, who happens to be on vacation right now, and Mrs. Kroom, they can assist you with the situation and try to figure out where the problems are. So maybe you can connect with her with your contact information.
How do I do that? So. We'll have your, can we have your contact information tonight before you go? If you have it, if you're going to leave early, can you give it to me right now?
I'm going to leave now, because I'm freezing.
Our geothermal's working overtime.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Chris Mau, 3205 West Canal Road, Dover. Just two, I guess, statements or questions from the summary from, from the guys here. Thanks for that, it was real good to get the update. I don't think you should let the plan con reimbursement direct your forward movement. The reimbursement's so low that looking at construction that should impact our community for the next 20 or 30 years, a couple million dollar reimbursement really doesn't change things, so I think you should think about what's the best plan forward. If we get reimbursement with that best plan, great, if we don't, so be it, but take the best plan, don't adjust it to get a million or two, because those options are so significantly different that choosing one over four, 100 million over 65 million, or 85 million for $4 million, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So that's one comment. And then the other is, at some point, it'd be good to see like a summary of how we're going to pay for it. So whether it's 65 million, 50 million, 100 million, how we're going to pay for it and what's it going to do to the tax base. I think it's important for everyone to understand that, yes, we might have some cash in the coffers today, but what's it look like five years from today? And I think there's enough smart people in the room to be able to pull that together to make sure that whatever we commit to, we're able to pay for without significant complaints. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lauren Craig, 2960 Anthony Way. I'm going to read just so that it's easier for me to make my points known. Good evening. As a teacher, community member, youth sports coach, and most importantly, a parent, I am trusting the correct decision about the building project would be to move forward in the process to approve and begin construction, excuse me, on a new high school building. The previous renovation of the existing building has left our building with more issues, including roofs that leak, gym roofs that leak every time it rains, or mostly if there's a torrential downpour, where buckets are left and students have to run around them during instruction. I'm a phys ed teacher, so that's part of my life. No air conditioning in the main gym, so when we have issues of rain for graduation and we want to move inside, it's uncomfortable. If we continue to have graduation on site, which has been fabulous, but we also do the, let's not hope it doesn't rain, it can't rain, it can't storm, okay? As well as an outdated infrastructure, among other things. I just feel renovating the building as just a high school only will just put a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. I'm not saying that that, if we convert, convert it to an intermediate school or a middle school, we're again having less students in that building. middle school, we're again having less students in that building. Every day I live in Dover, I work in Dover, I coach in Dover. Let's face it, it is my life 24/7. We talk as a district about being Dover proud, but I know that there are students, some students, not all, that do not feel proud to be from Dover. I'm not saying that a materialistic thing, like a school or a new building or a new whatever, will change their perspective, but I think it can give them hope that we do care about them and they deserve that. They deserve an educational learning environment that allows for space for learning, for growth, and I feel that should be our first priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Scott Miller, 4912 Harmony Grove Road. I'm a graduate of 1990 Dover. Went to Penn State, moved away. My wife and I came back in 2007, bought a greenhouse. We've since purchased another greenhouse in Wellsville, so we own two properties in Dover. And we're going to be building a house in Dover too in the near future. So we're here to stay. I have a fourth grade student at North Salem and my son is going to intermediate school in this year in seventh grade. So when we look at this, I look at this as a business. And to me, if we're going to spend $80 million or $100 million, land is cheap. So if we bought a 100-acre property, we could do things, not for this generation, 25, 30 years out, even if it meant waiting a little bit. And I don't know the educational or that, but I do, you know, Spring Grove, 278 acres, northeastern, 100. And this was, I did a quick and dirty tax map on, on the computer, see what other districts' land they have in building. I guess I kind of find it hard that we're on 30 acres from the intermediate school, 20, 27 acres for the high school. We're going to switch that, yet we're going to make everything perfect. But I just don't think in the long term, even if my kids didn't take advantage of this, in the long term, in 50 years, it would be nice that we had a high school and then when we need that new space, we simply add the next wing to it. And we have land in Dover. It could be done. We could go north of Dover and then people in Wellsville would make it a little bit happier. So that's, that's all my comment was. That land is cheap. We're taking $100 million, because when this is all said and done, I've dealt with construction projects, lay-down areas, it's going to increase. The Fed is going to keep increasing interest rates. The days are over, interest rates are going to keep climbing. So yes, loans will become more expensive in the years to come for sure. It's not going the other way anymore. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else?
I'm Barbara Lemenzo. I live at 3401 Schoolhouse Road. I'm a teacher in the district. I'm a parent. I have an incoming freshman. Great for me. Same building with his mama. I'm here really for selfish reasons. I'm here because I care about kids. As a teacher for 23 years in this district and a 1988 graduate of Dover High School myself, I am very invested in this community as I live here and raise my family here. I know that there are a lot of constructional problems at the high school. I've been through many, many, many renovations. Taught with no ceilings, taught with no floors, taught in the basement because my windows were being pulled out. And it's never fixed. My room is cold all year long. You can store meat and milk in my room in January. Lauren Craig had said about Dover pride, and I will tell you right now, I represent that. I embody that. I work with some of the best people in the world who were my teachers, who I admire greatly. But what I find, and my students are very, very proud too, and I'm proud of them, but there is a sense among the student body that we don't matter, that we just don't matter enough to have something updated, something that works, something that we can care about. And we make do, and we do, but it would be nice if we didn't have air conditioning problems. I just made a list of things. Crowded hallways. It'd be nice to, when my mother comes to watch my son in marching band, there are no railings even in our stadiums. I don't know if you've noticed, our elderly community has a heck of a time just getting in and out of our building in different places. Portable still in the back. Our bathrooms are barbaric. Cracks, leaks, AC heat. The auditorium cannot accommodate the entire student body. If we have something whole school, it's in the gym, which of course does not foster any sort of respectful environment if you're trying to listen. And our library. I've seen libraries at other schools, at other sporting events, and I drool. They're beautiful. I would love to offer our students chances to grow, to be prepared for college, trade school, tech school, military, starting a family to be a part of, and I see my time's out. I just care about kids. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lemenzo. Anybody else?
My name is Cheyenne Fleming. I'm 1113 Maple Drive, and I am-
Cheyenne, do you have a parent here that gives you permission to speak?
Yes.
The policy? Okay, thank you.
I'm a student at Dover Area High School, and there are kids that with Dover pride, they don't feel like, they don't want to come to school every day. And I feel like this will help them and it'll make them want to come and they'll want to learn every day. And I am Dover proud, so I want other kids to see the same. I want them to want to come every day and not be forced to. And also the, some of the rooms, I feel like if we get a new school and stuff, it'll be more open, so it won't be like as crowded, because not all the classrooms can hold this amount of students in each class, and we're like all cramped and stuff, so yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Moving on in the agenda then, we'll go to Board President's Communication. First, we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. That was to address personnel matters that are on tonight's agenda for a vote and to also address the DAEA grievance, which is also listed on tonight's agenda. So with that, I would like to move on to the DAEA grievance item under this section. And I would like to entertain a motion to deny grievance 2016-17, number four, recognition based on the understanding that both parties will work toward a resolution prior to this reaching arbitration. Do we have a motion for that? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Okay, and the motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2017 Board Meeting. That's June 13, actually. June 13, 2017 Board Meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Motion carries. Moving on to tonight's consent agenda, before we vote on anything on the consent agenda, I'd like to go through each category to address any questions or comments that any board members might have about any of the items on there. So first, we will go to human and fiscal resources. There is nothing under curriculum and professional development or facilities. So human and fiscal resources. Any questions or discussion on any items in that category? I did want to make note that we changed an item on the agenda for tonight. Originally, it was under 906, that we would have one part-time aide hired. The board has actually suggested that we hire three temporary part-time aides to address enrollment counts at the kindergarten level. 905 is to address enrollment levels throughout some of the elementary buildings as well. So I did also want to ask, under appointments, we have some new folks that would be up for hiring tonight, or any of them with us in the audience tonight that we could say hello?
Hi there.
And you are?
Grace.
Hi, Grace. Nice to meet you. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Any questions on this category or discussion? That would be it then, because we have nothing else under safe and supportive schools. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, motion carries. Welcome, Grace. It's official. Next category is our capital improvement steering committee category. As you saw earlier in the presentations, we have had a series of meetings recently to address the potential building project here. Our purpose tonight is to select an option so that we can provide guidance for the good folks from Crabtree here as to which way we're thinking we would like to head with all of this. As you had seen in the presentation tonight, they have developed four different options for us, ranging from around $66 million to about $95 million. Option number one was to add a new high school at the high school site and renovate and make additions to the existing intermediate school. That's the $95 million. Option number two was to add a new high school at the intermediate school site and convert the existing high school to an intermediate school. That's $69.8 million. Option three was to renovate and add on to the high school and renovate and add on to the intermediate school at a cost of about $83 million. And option number four was to convert the intermediate school to a high school and convert the high school to an intermediate school at an approximate cost of $66 million. Again, tonight's vote is not committing us to this project. It is just taking us to that next step to say, this is where we think, we feel we need to head, where our best option is, what the board sees as our viable option from a financial standpoint. I did want to address a little bit with that, you know, because questions have come up when it comes to the finances. Mrs. Benko, our business manager, is out of town right now, but she did provide the board with some information in advance so we could take a look at this. So I've given them each a chart that shows the current tax rates in the county and where Dover stands, as well as the potential financial cost of building this project at this point. So just to give those of you in attendance tonight a bit of an idea as to where Dover ranks when it comes to taxes and mills within the county. There are 15 school districts that are measured in the county from a tax mileage standpoint. Of the 15 districts, Dover is the fifth lowest in the county at this point. There are only four other school districts that are, have lower taxes than us, and they are southwestern, central, southern and northern. I should also mention that when looking at this chart over time, this will be the third year in a row now that we have not approved any tax increases for the Dover area school district. There are not many school districts that can say that. So again, for the 2017-18 year, again, there's a 0% increase. That does not take into consideration if the county would happen to raise your taxes. You know, that, we have no control over that. But from the standpoint of the school board itself, there have been no raises by this board over the past three years. One other important item to note in all of that is that the board has also, in the past year, voted to eliminate the per capita tax. So we no longer assess that per capita tax on the residents of the district. So in a sense, we've not raised taxes for three years. We've eliminated one. So from a financial standpoint, I think the board as a whole has been very responsible and very respectful of our community. We're all taxpayers too. We recognize the challenges there, and I'm proud of the fact that we've gone three years without an increase and that we're the fifth lowest in the county at this point. So wanted to address that. And then also, our business manager had provided us with an outline that is assuming that we would look at option number two. Option number two, again, to remind you, is the new high school at the intermediate school site and renovating the existing high school to become a intermediate school. That is the one that's approximately $70 million. So according to our business manager, who has done some calculations on this, and again, I want to stress that this is worst-case scenario from our business manager, based on what we have before us. Looking at a $70 million project with a 6% reimbursement from the state, using current interest rates plus 60 to 75 basis points for the bond issue, and utilizing $8 million of our district reserve funds, the maximum total equivalent mills that we would need to help fund this project would be two mills. To put that into perspective, the average tax bill in the Dover area school district would increase $235 over a 10-year period. Not $235 a year, $235 over a 10-year period. So I know there's some math teachers and former math teachers in the room. I passed math in Dover when I was here. That essentially works out to $2 a month over a 10-year period for the average taxpayer in the district. I know there have been rumors flying around on social media and other things that taxes would double, you know, things like that. Simply not the case. So based on this information, again, this is worst-case scenario, $235 over a 10-year period to cover the debt service. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention as we, you know, look at these options before us so that we can continue to move forward here. This is a serious investment, a serious commitment, but we wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we're looking at everything when it comes to this from a financial sense. Board members, did you have anything you wanted to add from the financial discussion? I know we've had some conversations about the strength of our financial position and some other districts would be thrilled to be in the position we're in financially. Is there anything else any of you would like to add on that?
Just, I'd just like to maybe emphasize or build on what you just said there, that in, you know, in the last three years, we've gone from a district that was the fifth highest tax, tax mileage rate to the fifth lowest in our county. That wasn't happenstance. That was through a lot of hard work, through our administrative team, you know, looking for ways to save money, but not do it at the expense of programs and not do it at the expense of bringing, bringing some students back to our district and, you know, bringing some of the finances along with them back into our district. So there's, there's been a lot of people working very hard to put us in this position. There is a fair amount of money in capital reserve right now that has been put aside to help in this type of a situation that, you know, we're not going out there and looking at borrowing all of the money. We have a fairly good down payment. Tried to do our part as a board to set ourselves in a position where, you know, Plan Con reimbursement is, is an option. Maybe it wouldn't have been had we waited till now to start pursuing something. So along the way, we've tried to do what we can to strategically take it step by step, do our research, do our due diligence to find out what our best options are, and we, we're in the process of doing that now. As far as the taxes, I'm a- As far as the taxes, I'm a taxpayer too. You know, the, the general sentiment out in the public is taxes are too high. I mean, that's just our natural sentiment, and nobody really wants to see taxes go up. I think it would be irresponsible for us as, as a board to say that we guarantee no tax increase as a result of this project. There are things that may be beyond our control, but given the fact that, you know, what, what Jen has done here in her research, that, you know, we're in a very good position with the finances that we have, with the down payment that we potentially can put into it, we're in a very good position to do something for our students that really needs to be done. When you tour our current intermediate school, there's a lot of, a lot of need there, and doing nothing isn't really an option. So, as a board member, as a board, kind of, kind of weigh everything out, got to weigh the community, the impact to the community, and, you know, the real reason we're here is to educate the students. So, it's, it's been a step-by-step process, and I'll probably be one to admit that it's probably not moving as fast as I think it should for my own satisfaction, but just know that all of these things are being taken into consideration, and we're trying to do what is best, not only for our students, but for our community. This is an investment that we want for everyone, not just the kids, this is for our families as well, for our community and everything. So, I appreciate the comments that were made tonight, you know, in, in taking a serious look at a lot of different angles to this. I think we have tried to do that as we've gotten to this point, you know, and I think we're there, I think we are. But, but thank you for the community's input, and we welcome to continue that as well.
What else?
I wanted to add, basically echo what Mr. Cook said, too. As a parent of an incoming sixth grader and third grader who has a future here in the district of another at least 10 years, this is something I don't take lightly, this is the education of my children. And to see the potential, I've been in the buildings as a board member, as a PTO member years ago, as a parent, I've seen the dedication of our teachers, I've seen the potential of our students, and I'm amazed every time I go into one of our buildings, and to see that potential and be able to support our kids with something like this, just, it just makes me very excited about where the future of Dover and where we can go. In fact, we were even recognized by the governor, I think I keep bringing this up, but I think it's just really cool, the governor in his budget address back in February, recognized our CTE program as the best in the state. So, I really, I'm, this project gets me excited, I'm excited to see the future of Dover and give our kids the support they deserve for a quality education, so that they can then come back and make, make a life for themselves in Dover, reinvesting in our community and beyond, so. That's my soapbox.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, what I'd like to do at this point then is ask each board member individually which plan, or which option I should say, would be the one they would be most interested in pursuing at this point. So again, a reminder, you all have the chart in front of you as to which options were option one, two, three, and four, so we'll just take a tally and go from there. So, I'll start things off by saying that at this point, I would support option number two, which is the building of a new high school at the intermediate school site and converting the high school to an intermediate school for $69.8 million. I think that is probably the most reasonable, most cost-effective solution for what we're trying to accomplish here, and really gets us to where we need to be in the end. So, if we could go through Mrs. Brenton, which of those options would you select?
I would be in favor of number two as well.
Mr. Cook?
Option two.
Mr. DeSho?
Option two.
Mr. Delauter?
Option two, but I, I just wanted to say, I think one of the surprising things for me, and I know a lot of folks during our discussions over the last year, was, you know, the, looking at the renovations, and the renovation costs just kind of blew me away of how much more expensive the renovation option would be. So, but again, for me, option two, I think is again, the most responsible option and the best option at this point.
Mr. Amick?
Option three.
Mrs. Herman?
Two.
Mrs. Mailey?
Option two, but I do want to add that, you know, hearing the, the two teachers speak about the concerns about the high school building itself, and, and how bad some of the situations are with the leakage and everything else, you know, it makes me question whether that $5 million to get it ready for our intermediate school kids, we certainly don't want them playing in a leaking gym, you know, so, so option two, you know, is the option that I choose, but I, I wonder if we're going to have to really kind of negotiate for some of these options within the high school, to maybe lessen that $64,800, or $64,800, to be able to give some of that money to other renovations for the current high school, because I certainly don't want to do that to our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, that doesn't seem like a good option to me.
Mr. Ralhauser?
Option two.
Option two.
The comments made here tonight were kind of surprising, being on the facility committee, that I knew the intermediate school had problems with the roof, but we've never been told about leaking at the high school, and that comes as a surprise to me tonight.
With eight votes for option number two, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the district's architect, Crabtree, Rorball, and Associates, to move forward with, with the design phase of option number two.
Is there a move?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Allman.
Okay, so this means that they're going to go ahead and start drawing plans up for option two, correct?
Correct. Thank you, everybody. I wanted to stress that at this point, this begins a whole new phase of this process, this is a process actually where the community has a great involvement, will be reaching out through, Mr. Perkins mentioned the communications efforts earlier, really getting community involved, having the say as to, you know, what we want in this building, what we need in this building, and where we're headed with that. So, gentlemen, did you have anything you wanted to add from Crabtree at this point?
We're equally excited, certainly don't want to give the impression that we've designed so many schools that it's mundane, it's not, they're all unique, and we're excited about the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, moving on in the agenda, Dover Eagle Foundation, I do not have anything additional to report on that at this time. York Adams Academy, Mr. Amick?
Yeah, I'm happy to announce that due to the resignation of our director and the superintendent of record, we now have filled both of them positions at our meeting, last meeting about two weeks ago.
Who is the new superintendent of record?
That will be the superintendent of Eastern, and right now, her, my, her names, I don't know at this moment.
Okay.
I can't remember.
We can look her up.
I'll look her up.
Any other questions for Mr. Amick? Okay. York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter?
Just an update on the resolution for construction, for the bond issue for their construction project, all schools came back and did approve that resolution, so York County School of Technology is now going to do the same thing, start the process moving forward to investigate what needs to be done, so I'll look further on there. And then, along with the York Academy, York County School of Technology also has a new superintendent of record, and that's Dr. Deasley, I think is how you say his name, I think he's from Southern School District, so he's taking over for, yeah, and the current one. Just, slips of mine, I think he retired as well.
I thought it was going to be the superintendent from Red Line.
What's the name, is it, maybe he's from Red Line?
I think he's from Red Line.
Okay, all right, I apologize on that one. And that's everything for me.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. LIU Special Education, Mrs. Kroom?
No report.
Okay. Legislative, Mr. Ralhauser?
Nothing to report, that's how much they got done.
PSBA, Mrs. Brenton?
Nothing to report, just again, to reiterate, I guess, the October bank-
The conference.
Conference, my gosh. And Hershey.
Okay. The Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman?
Meeting is next Wednesday.
Superintendent's report, we have our acting superintendent here, Mrs. Kroom?
Okay, as Amy pulls this up, I, I want to share our preliminary PSSA and Keystone scores with you, and I think that's important to do in July when everything is back for the first time, and they, they'll be, they'll be massaged a little bit by the state of Pennsylvania when they pull, put kids in and take kids out. But before I share them with you, I want just to stress how hard the administration has worked this summer, from, from when we had our first instructional leadership team meetings in early June, we set goals for this summer and for next school year. We are working with a comprehensive plan, and we, we have a lot of work to do. And I know that's not new information, but this is our preliminary PSSA data, if you take a look, there's 2016 on the left and 2017 on the right, math, language, arts, and Some areas, if you, if you look at a grade that, a cohort that went from third to fourth grade, you might see some growth, but we do recognize that we do have a lot of work in our continuous improvement model. The next slide is the Keystone data. This Keystone data is based on our graduation cohort, that is the best way to measure it, because Keystones are given at all different grade levels, and you can't just look at, like a third grade PSSA, you can't compare it the same way. Okay. Okay, Amy? So what are we going to do? We put together five SMART goals for the next school year, and each principal has been working very hard with a team of teachers to set the direction for their building next year. The very first goal is we recognize that we have to truly improve our data analysis process and our skills. So, we are going to, we're going to implement MAP, and we are training on that on the in-service day, and everyone will be looking at data, we will be setting goals, and we will be working on how we work as a team, both at the administrative level and at each building level. The second goal that we are working on is our tier-one process, and our tier-one process is how we educate all students. That involves our curriculum, that involves our assessments, that involves how we differentiate instruction. We will be looking at all of those pieces, district-wide and individually at the building level. For example, we do recognize that our curriculum needs a lot of work. So, this summer, we have spent time with the K to six, K to eight, actually, language arts teachers, and we are aligning our curriculum to the standards, and then we are aligning the materials you graciously purchased for us last year with, with that curriculum. We are working with math as well, and the high school is doing a lot of curriculum work. So, we are going to be looking at all areas of what we're doing with all our students. Number three deals with our students who struggle the most. How are we intervening with them in the classroom? How are we intervening with them out of the classroom? What are our reading specialists doing? What are our special education teachers doing with students? So we are going to take a hard look at all that, our students that struggle, again, using our data analysis process, and we are going to put things in place, and we will get our data, and we will look at it, make sure it's working, and continue to move on or change it if necessary. Number four, we are refining our process for our positive behavior intervention and support system. Culture is something we're looking at in each of the buildings, we are making sure that our behavior processes are correct, and that everyone's philosophy puts students first. So every building has a different goal in that area, and, and the principals are working very hard with their team of teachers to, to look at this. And then finally, the principals and I are going to work together identifying the teacher evaluation system, and making sure it is meeting our needs, and we are doing it correctly. We are going to look, it's called the Danielson rubric, and it's very clearly specifies what good teaching looks like, and we are going to work together and create exactly what it looks like in Dover, so we can share with teachers, you know, to create and improve your strategies, or create and improve your data analysis, this is exactly what you need to do. So the principals and I are going to work together all year on this, create documents for the teachers, train them where we need to train them. These are very dynamic goals, and the principals can probably tell you how hard they've been working, they're smiling back there, we are all going in the same direction, and that feels really good. So I feel very good about our goals, and I'm very proud of the work the principals are doing in the building level. And then our comprehensive goals, this year, if you, you can notice, they align completely with our SMART goals, effective instructional practices, making sure they're all in place, our standard-aligned curriculum, we are going to be working on that all year, and then finally, positive school climate, ensuring a family and community support. So everything is aligning, everything is talking to each other, and everything is moving in one direction, and we're moving together. So again, what are some things we've been doing? I talked a little bit about the language arts, we've, we've met twice, we are moving, meeting one more time. We chose one language arts teacher from each of the elementary buildings, they are working as a team of four, to align the curriculum and bring all of the materials together, so every single elementary is on the same page and going the same way. Grade seven and eight math teachers are meeting with Bobby, actually, to write curriculum and to make sure that we are aligned, and we are aligned to what is being assessed on our state assessments. Our teams, of course, created SMART goals, which we talked about, we are bringing in that NWEA MAP, which is our assessment piece, foundations, which is a phonics piece, we are recommitting to, which we're very excited about, kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers. And then finally, everyday math, which is our math program, we are making sure everyone understands how it is to be implemented, and so we are going to bring some professional development in for that well, as well. And then finally, the district and the building administrators, we are meeting a lot, we are together all the time, and we are working just to collaborate and make sure that our processes are clean and they're right, and they are, they are meeting the needs, and we are doing what's best for the kids, and we're doing what's best for the teaching staff, and making sure we all have the same philosophy across all of the buildings. So, it's been a very, very busy summer, and it will be a very busy school year, but it'll be great.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom?
I have a question, and it, it just looks great, you guys are all amazing, I know we've, I've had some conversations with you off the, you know, the side, and we've had our little brainstorm at, at lunch the one day about some cool stuff, so I'm really excited.
Yes.
But I also want to make sure, and it looks like everything is, is headed in that direction, that when we're doing this, the curriculum throughout the school itself, and specifically the elementary schools, are consistent throughout the grades within the building, and then again, from building to building. For example, I know Wiggles Town, we didn't have some of the same events and opportunities that some of the other elementary schools may have had, and I really, like, at the science fair was one of them, and I think that would have been a great opportunity. So I just want to emphasize that I'd really like to, to, and like I said, it looks like that's headed in the right direction, just wanted to-
The elementary principals and myself, we met this week, and I think the biggest accomplishment we did was create a supply list that is the same. It is one elementary supply list that we are going to take to Walmart and Target, and we have it posted on the, on the, on the board. It took us a while, but we did it, you know, what are parents responsible to purchase, and it's the same for all buildings. We had our conversation about field trips, and we, just the different experiences, and we are absolutely heading in that direction, and I think it feels good, I think everyone feels, they have, they have each other to support each other, and I think it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to go very well. So, so far, so good.
Great, and thank you guys for all of your hard work.
Very hard.
We really appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category, this is for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add at this time?
Yes, my comment was a little hard on the legislators, they are getting some things done, but the budget, they're not. They are getting some things done, but the budget, they're not. Uh, the governor signed a bill that vocational students will no longer be, have to pass the Keystone tests and they're working on trying to eliminate the Keystone tests entirely for the students because they claim that, oh, some kids can do good in tests and some kids can't and that doesn't say what they know.
Anybody else?
Yes, um, I watched on my computer last month's board meeting and I would just like to direct this to Dennis. I'm so glad the cheese sandwich has been put to rest. I was thrilled to hear it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, uh, I wanna thank the community members who came out tonight and, and gave their comments to us. I know for me, uh, hearing your viewpoints, uh, is, is very important and, and I do take them into, to consideration, uh, when any decisions I make. And I encourage you as well as your neighbors to, to become more involved in our district. Uh, you know, the nine of us up here, we don't know everything. I know I don't know everything. Um, and, and having that viewpoint from other folks really helps me become better at, at doing my job here. So again, I encourage you, uh, to, to get more involved and to start attending these meetings. Secondly, I, I gotta say, listening to Mrs. Craig and Mrs. Lemenzo and Mrs. Fleming, um, talk about how the students don't feel that, that they're appreciated, uh, it breaks my heart. It really does. Um, I, again, I can't speak for everybody else on this board, but that's why I'm here. I mean, that, that's why I'm here on this board is to make sure that our students have the best education that, that we can provide for them. And like I said, just to hear that, that, that they don't feel that we'll provide that to them, that, that, that breaks my heart.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Uh, this will bring up our second public comment period. This is again for items on or off of tonight's agenda. This is a two-minute period this time. Uh, so again, if you have anything you'd like to state, uh, please come to the microphones at the seats and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Mal, three two zero five West Canal Road, Dover. That math is great, two dollars a month. We should build a couple of new schools. Are you gonna publish that math at all?
Yes.
That we could review? Great.
Yeah, that'll be part of the communication plan.
And the next, the most important thing I, I think was discussed even more so than the spending was the scores. I didn't understand any of that. So maybe next time, we could maybe slow down, where are we doing good, where are we not doing good? That's probably the most important thing in these discussions.
In October, when the state literally releases the actual right scores and it's a great big report card, I'll take extensive time explaining all of it.
That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if it's just for me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'm in and visiting, we can talk. Absolutely. That'd be great.
And then, um, the third thing, um, last year I sat through, came to a lot of these meetings and there was holes in the faculty that weren't filled, there were aides that were released, there were things that were done so maybe we could not raise taxes for three years. I don't know why, but those things I think were very important to benefit our kids. Not so much a cold room or no one wants a cold room, no one wants a leaking ceiling, but the faculty's the most important part of all this. And when I sit through these meetings for six months and I hear, we didn't fill this position, we don't have a library, we're gonna let this aid go, that's all, that's so much exponentially more important than a new building. So I, I, it's exciting to think about a new building, but if we can't do the very basic stuff, which is have good quality faculty, we're never gonna have Dover pride. You can have the best school in the world, but if you don't have good faculty and enough attention for the students, you're never gonna have Dover pride. So I just ask you to make sure that you have the best faculty we can afford after a new building and we have enough faculty to cover all the students. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, we do have, in my opinion, I might be a little biased, but I think we do have some of the best faculty around, so maybe not enough, but I agree. I think we have, we have the best.
Mrs. Lemenzo.
Barbara Lemenzo, thirty-four oh one Schoolhouse Road. We have great teachers, we have great students and I don't want you to be discouraged when I said, you know, a, a lot of our kids feel like they don't matter. It's not in every aspect, it's not every kid, but I hear it enough and that breaks my heart as a parent and a teacher. And you're right, cold rooms and leaky ceilings, I can teach in a field. Um, but it does matter when the kids feel like they're not important enough to be comfortable. I mean, I've had my kids, I've, I've had classes move out to the hallway. Uh, you can ask other faculty members and administrators because my room's been so cold. So, I mean, it's more than just a cold room and believe me, I'm fine with cold rooms at this stage of my life. The kids, the kids are not. When they're putting on coats and they're sneezing and they're getting sick and there's allergies and there's, you know, I agree. I'm Dover proud too and, and we've got a great, great faculty in all the buildings and, um, we've got great kids and they persevere. So be proud of that, cause I certainly am. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, at this point, our future meetings, uh, our next meeting will be August fifteenth and the board meeting, uh, boardroom here at seven PM. That will be our regular board meeting. Uh, we do not have any committee meetings in August. Uh, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.